He's not here. And then when she comes in.
All right, it's six o'clock and it's time for the regular meeting of the Girdon School District Board of Directors. We'll call the meeting north.
Thank you for this day and thank you for the opportunity that we have to to serve in this district, Lord, and the opportunity to serve the teachers and students that we have. We ask you to help us that we'll make the best decisions that we can. And that will make this district as good of a district as we can. What we ask you to be with us through the entirety of this meeting and with each one that's here. All these things asking Jesus' name.
Amen.
Play sandwich for the pledge.
If any questions on the consent agenda, not entertain a motion.
I get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor, the motion say aye.
I'm saying it.
All right, we got a motion to say, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side, that motion passed.
Hey, we got a lot of things going on, uh, you know, in my report, uh, one big thing, several big things that are happening tonight. But also, uh, we've been talking to a food service co- management company called K twelve management. And, uh, there's several different types of management companies. One comes in and takes over everything, the employees become their employees. In other words, they're no longer employees of our district. And I'm not interested in doing that. And I don't think you guys are either, okay? Uh, K twelve and and there may be others, but K twelve, they are managing it where they get economies of scale to, you know, and their bids. You know, because they have, I think nineteen other schools, there's a lot of schools, you know, and a lot of them in Southern Arkansas. Uh, and so you get economy to scale with, you know, your bulk buying, so you get your, your stuff cheaper. They also help with menus and they help with paperwork and they help with other stuff. Uh, and, uh, we would like to, uh, and and there's no need for a vote, but unless you just absolutely say, heck no. Uh, we'd like to proceed with that. And the way that happens is we send in to the Department of Ed that we were, we'd like to proceed. And at that point, we would put out an RFQ and then they would come in after that and present to the board. And then you would pick how many it would be, or I would pick, or somebody would pick how many you would talk to. Uh, but there's not but one or two that do it this way. Uh, most of them won't, all the employees in it. Uh, and then at that point, we would, you know, we'd put out contracts, you know, not a contract, but we would, you, you know, we could get out of it all the way up to, it's about a sixty ninety day process. And we could get out of it at any point if we don't think it's good. But we want to proceed with it and then let them come and show us, can they save us money? Can they help us? Millie's here and, you know, uh, they sort of approached me and her and, uh, and and what he, they've come and visited with us and I think they've visited with some of your staff. And we would like to proceed with it, knowing that we want to know more about it. Unless you haven't, uh, if we can save money or we can have, if we save money, it means we can do more with our food service. And as far as, you know, the product on the table, you know, salad bars, other things, you know, multiple things, if we have any more money to play with. They help with the efficiency of it, which we're moving to one cafeteria, which would be a big help. Uh, so, uh, and these are, you know, not long-term contracts. So, you know, if you want out of it, you can get out of it. Okay, you may have a question or a problem with me doing that?
Well, I mean, Millie, do you think that's it's worth looking into based on your experience?
I'm being open-minded about it because they can bring things in. If nothing else, if they come in and we see what they can do and we don't want them anymore, we've got their idea of their menus and all.
Got you. Do you think it would disrupt our, as far as your help of?
No, because, uh,
Getting them back, I guess, if we decided after sixty or ninety days that we didn't want it, do you think that would disrupt our process or your process?
No, because we keep, I'd have all my employees I've got now. And with them wanting to do two or three things, it's going to take every employee. Plus with us having to take third dollars to the primaries and all.
Got you.
And both of my managers, you know, I had them come in and talk with them and they were open-minded about it.
Yes. Or a bunch of smaller schools.
Yeah, you're not, uh, yeah, there's, you know, and I should have brought that list and I didn't, but, uh, Horatio does it, can you name some other, uh, Magnolia does it, uh? Mercy, you put me on the spot, but, uh, there was, but they have nineteen that they work with right now.
Got you.
And so, and again, tonight, you're not voting at all, so you're not deciding to do it, you're deciding to proceed with the process. And then when they come to you, that's when you either, they can show us exact figures and what it's going to cost us to pay them versus what it would cost us to save by getting, you know, uh, you know, bulk buying. So, anyway, uh, girls are in the regionals Wednesday night, so they're the only team that that made it. Uh, anything, a lot of things going on, but we'll keep plodding ahead, go ahead and we'll go to the next. Go ahead.
I'm mulling this all when the man goes. So, so we're, we're, we're saying, we just give him permission to go in, go for, for informational purposes.
Right.
Not for, not for coming back to, okay, boom, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, oh, there's a lot of questions I ain't getting answered here. One is in this hybrid system, since we're not asking to take off, I'm looking, I want to look at cost, I want to look at, you know,
Absolutely.
How they flow, I want to look, you know, what we're really looking at, uh,
The quality of the food.
Cost, yeah. It be into it, see, I, so, so, yeah, we give you information on second.
What it is, is about a sixty day deal where you've got to, the first thing we got to do is we got to send in a letter to the department that we want to proceed with looking into it. And that's all we're doing. They then, she's got sent a bunch of stuff, we'll send a bunch of stuff to them that what we would like to do, that we want to do a hybrid, not, you know, full out, you know, selling the whole place out. And then, uh, then they will approve that, then we will put out an RFQ, then that RFQ comes in. And then at that point, you can either accept or reject, or we figure out what we're doing from there. So what you're doing tonight is nothing but saying, let's just sort of go forward. Okay, that makes sense?
What, what do y'all think?
It doesn't hurt in looking into it, we can save money and have, and they have better, you know, and and help them create better things and be more efficient and, uh, and getting and save money on buying power than, you know, or basically nineteen schools are buying green beans instead of just us. So you're getting a bulk rate, you know, and getting a lot cheaper. Anyway, again, it's just a, we're just going to proceed with looking into it. You know, you're not making a decision. That's why I put it in mind instead of a motion, okay? You okay with that?
I see, I'm, I'm, I'm there. The, uh, RFQ and those, if I get the bag in there.
No. And it, it, at any, at any point before you say, I do, you can back out of the wedding, okay?
Okay. All right, so move forward to.
Yeah. And I've asked Mr., uh, Mr. Vardman to come today and I've talked to y'all about it a little bit, so y'all are a little bit familiar with that, what's going on. But I had him come because he knew all the ins and outs and we'll just let you take the floor and go for it. You can either sit or you can, or you can stand, whatever you feel.
Never let a chair go to waste. Does everybody get a copy of this? This, yeah. Everybody got a copy of this page? It, it should be circled right here, about midway up, uh, McGill Ford Road. The lower left, there's two plots of land there, number forty-two and number thirty-eight. Those plots were designated in nineteen twenty-six to school district number seventy-nine in Clark County. Uh, done as much research as I can do, gotten with the Department of Education, uh, they only go back so far. We can't find any records of a school district number seventy-nine ever existing. However, that land, the circle here, was given to school district number seventy-nine to be used, uh, specifically for a school or church purposes only. So in this deed in nineteen twenty-six, and there's nothing after this, there's no, been no subsequent deeds filed. But, excuse me, uh, we can't find who owns the property, uh, at present. It was granted by Charles Thornton and Jesse Thornton and Justice Chancellor and I don't know, it said a name, Dosia, Dosia Chancellor, uh, to school district number seventy-nine, again, for school or church purposes only. That, that is a covenant in that deed, which means it has to be used specifically for school or church purposes. And if it doesn't, what normally happens is it's going to be referred back to the grantors, okay? However, again, problematic is, we can't find anybody that's, that as far as we know is related to the grantors that gave the land to school district number seventy-nine. All around those two plots, my client Cypress Break Land and Timber Company owns that and or leases it for timber purposes. And what they are wanting is to ultimately purchase those two plots of land. What I came up with as a solution, since it's supposed to be used for school purposes, is that it's in the Girdon School District, those two plots, okay? I think it, uh, merged with Oklahoma at one time and suddenly became or ultimately became part of Girdon School District. Again, no records from the Department of Education on that or our Department of Education. So what we are asking you to do today, uh, okay, I'm sorry, I, full disclosure, I'm also the Girdon City Attorney. I do the prosecuting for the city courts, just to let everybody know. Uh, but what we're asking you to do today is have the school district become a plaintiff. And, and what we want to do is petition the court.
You should, you should.
I'll stand.
You good, that case?
Not good.
So what we're asking you guys to do is to become a plaintiff and petitioning the court to, one, to remove the covenant. That is the covenant that makes this land specifically for school or church purposes. And to ultimately quiet the title, we call quiet the title. And so if Girdon School District becomes the plaintiff, there, there, there's no, uh, cost to the, to school, there's no exposure. My client Cypress, uh, Break is going to pay for everything, but we need a nominal plaintiff. And so here's the result of it, hopefully at the end, is we determine that there are relatives of the grantor that live around here. And how we'll do that is we'll hire an attorney, ad litem, and they will go out and research and see if we can't find one of the heirs of Mr. Chan, Mr. Mrs. Chancellor, Mrs. Mr. and Mrs. Thornton. And if we do, then ultimately that'll change the direction of the case. You guys will be put out of it because you have nothing to gain at that point. However, in the event we can't find any of the heirs in this area or anywhere else, or the attorney ad litem was unable to find anybody, then we ask the court to quiet the title in the Girdon School District. And so remove the covenant, it becomes this property that my client wants, Cypress Break wants to buy the property. So you guys have no exposure, no cost, we just need a nominal name on the, how we start the complaint process, how we start the litigation process. I say litigation, this is, we're really just trying to find out who owns the land, so ultimately we can try and purchase it. So that, that is the extent of it, that's in a nutshell, does anybody have any questions?
All that does perceive and happens, in other words, they end up giving us the title, you know, to the land. They say they want to buy it, but we would have to put it out for bid.
That's correct.
And then whoever, if they bid the most, they got it, or somebody else bid, they'd get it, okay? We couldn't just say, thank you for all your work.
That's right.
We sell it to them.
That's right.
And it, and, and it would have to be sold at market price. Anything we sell would have to be appraised and sold at market.
And however, you, you ought, the process for you guys would be that process. All we're trying to do is find somebody that says, this is the school purpose, y'all's belongs to the school. Now we want to try to buy it, but we would quiet the title in your name unless we find one of the heirs of the thorns or chancellors.
That's correct.
Yes, number forty-two, there should be circled there, about halfway up McGill Ford Road. I think it's two. There, there's almost no, there, there is no subsequent, no subsequent deed.
Is there any meets and bounds on the description?
Only what's in there. Like I said, that, this was just a stroke of luck that we, that we could find that.
So is it just that little corner?
The circle has two lot plots in it.
Forty-two and thirty-eight. As best as we can figure. I know tho- those are the two plots that, that are sitting there and we, we can't find out who, until we believe that deed is.
But you're saying those plots are two acres?
Two, one acre plots.
Two one acre plots.
Two regular, oh.
That's correct. That is my understanding and information from others. Again, I, I'm not, I'm familiar with the area, but not the, not the two actual plots. Th- that will come through the investigation of the attorney ad litem, just trying to figure out, again, if we can find an heir. If not, we'll have to have a, a new meets and bounds description done.
I talked to Bernard and I talked to Kirk and Kirk, didn't you have, didn't somebody go out there and look at it or? See where it was? You didn't ever get any, where?
I knew, I knew what it did, I thought it was that.
Well, yeah, but you didn't, you don't have any idea who.
No, I mean, it was probably his own property.
Again, the attorney ad litem will be hired for to do, specifically to try and find the heirs. If we try, we'll publish it in the paper and all that. We just have to get the process started so it's all legal and we can ultimately find out what the boundaries actually are. And if we have to go all the way back to the beginning with the title search to the initial land grant, we may have to do that, but all we need now is a nominal plaintiff to start the process.
Thank you most, can we pursue the process of having the land come into the Girdon School District as a nominee?
Second.
We have a motion to say, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side, that motion passed.
You know, some of you probably deal with land, you understand this is, we, we won't know the result next month. Or next year, probably, so.
Who did you say you're, that was interested in it?
Oh, Cypress.
Cypress Break.
Cypress Land, Cypress Break Land in Denver. So Ed Givens, I don't know if you know him, he's the. Yeah. Yep, is anybody, yeah, that's right. If y'all want to keep.
Thank you.
If you want to give.
Keep it, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't, yeah. Thank you.
I'll keep mine. Uh, I have another one somewhere.
Well, yeah, well, I just get the minutes, the certified minutes of that.
Yeah. Well, actually, the certified minutes won't be till the next board meeting.
You'll let me know?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
We'll just have Rhonda mail them to you and.
Okay.
You gave her a card, right?
No, I've got cards here, if anybody wants one, I'll give you one, yeah.
So that way she can just, whenever she gets the minute certified, the next board meeting, she can just mail it out.
Okay.
Or email it to you.
Sure, just as long as it's certified, I can go for, we'll go forward, so. That's it, thanks.
Bet, thank you. All right. Mr. Jason, you're up to bat.
Can I be back with you guys?
It's gonna be great, bro.
No, I, I'm, I'm happy, I'm enjoying it. Um, so tonight I've brought a blue folder instead of a bound copy of things. And what I've included in there is a resolution that has a proposed budget of expenditures as well as the application. I'm going to walk you through all that. I've also included in the packet similar information to what you saw last week, just information about the district's finances, etc. Just in case you didn't have that copy with you, you'd have some information here before you this evening. Before I begin, since you've had kind of some time to digest this, let me see if there's any questions initially, and then I can kind of walk you through some different. See if there's any initial questions about.
We probably, do we need to get to the four, four point five now?
Well, I was going to go through that and explain all that in just a second, if there's no general questions about the process. So the resolution you have before you this evening in the packet is exactly the same resolution that you saw before. There is one change that we have made, that's what Mr. Vining was alluding to just now. If you look at the proposed budget of expenditures, if you remember us discussing this last time, the proposed budget of expenditures will be what the ballot language will look like, that is what will be reflected when the voters vote on this in May. So if you'll allow me, and this might get a little bit tedious, but I just want everybody to be on the same page, let's walk through this again, so everybody kind of understands exactly what this information says. You'll see there, and this is on page three after the resolution, the proposed budget, different line items related to your maintenance and operation. We, for this particular exercise, we have taken two percent increase from last year's proposed budget of expenditures for your maintenance and operation. You'll see down at the bottom there, the bonded debt payment, this is just a swag where we think the payment will be, obviously, interest rates will dictate that. But it gives at least a sense to the public of what that payment would look like. And we're looking at a building fund expense or building fund amount of approximately four point five million dollars. When I was here last month, we talked about four million dollars, but if you remember as part of the discussion, we said, well, it could be as high as five, it could be even higher than that. And discussions with surviving, where we landed though is at four and a half. Now, keep in mind, and this is very important, is that we've decided on four and a half, but if we come back and decide, well, we only need four million, you don't have to borrow four and a half. Think about this as your authorization from the public. So whatever's voted on is what the voters will authorize you to be allowed to do. So the par amount of bonds to be borrowed, that's laid out in here, the amount that millage can run, the number of mills, all that is highlighted in this proposed budget. And so the four and a half gives us the flexibility, if we need it, to borrow up to that amount. But if we are able to make it to where we only need four or three point seven, or whatever that number is, you don't have to borrow that full amount. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, so.
But it's okay if you would, you did borrow the total amount, if you didn't spend it.
That's correct, yeah, 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 that's right. So if you could find a capital improvement to put those monies to and use it for, um, that, that is something you could do. So if you allow me right here, if you kind of look through the first part of the, the next paragraph under the numbers, a lot of legal leaves in there. But what that ultimately says is that you're voting, or the voters will be voting on a forty-three mil, um, millage rate. That's going to be an increase of that seven mills that we discussed. So twenty-five maintenance and operation mills, you have eleven current debt service mills. We're going to extend those out and then we'll be adding seven more to that for a total of the forty-three point zero. On the next page, if you go down to about the middle of that paragraph, you'll see that we are issuing bonds in an amount not to exceed eight point one million dollars. Again, we may not, it might be eight million sixty-five thousand, it might be seven million nine, whatever that ultimate number is. But what this says is, is that you will not issue debt more than eight point one million dollars and which will mature over a period of thirty-five years. Again, if you remember our discussion, what we talked about is we, for this particular bond issue, because we're tying those debt service mills to it, we're going to do a thirty-five year repayment term. That will allow you to come back in a couple of years and do a thirty-year bond issue with the current revenues we'll have going back to the public and do the projects that you want to do in the future and still do a thirty-year repayment. As the purpose of this funding, we'll be refunding, which means paying off your July seven, twenty twenty bonds and constructing and equipment various capital improvements to existing school facilities. The surplus revenues produced each year by the debt service millage may be used by the district for other school purposes. That surplus revenue, as you may recall, is not restricted, it can be used for any permissible school purpose. So everything from teacher salaries to keeping the lights on to whatever you need to use it for, it's not restricted, so, um, be mindful of that. The total proposed school tax levy of forty-three mills represents a seven mil increase over the current tax rate. So that is the language that will appear on the ballot. What will be in the ballot, though, at, after that particular paragraph, it'll say for or against. It'll be one question on the ballot and that will appear in addition to the annual school election, uh, information. So let me stop there and see if you have any questions about what you have before you. The only change, as I mentioned, is just the par amount went up from about seven million five sixty, I believe it was last time, to the eight point one, which reflects that five hundred thousand dollar increase or so.
But I got one question, this is mainly for the video people. Do you think this is sound business? In your opinion, for what, for us putting this together the way that it is, I know we've talked about this in the past, but.
I, I do, and, and the reason, there's a couple of reasons for that. One, um, what we've been able to show you, showed you the last couple of times we've been together, is that by increasing the millage rate to where we're increasing it to, you will have plenty of revenue coming into the district to not only cover the proposed projects that you're looking to do in the future, but also to any maintenance and operation or any other permissible school purpose that you would need to use that revenue for. So what we've done, even though the millage is a, it's a large ask and we recognize that, is make sure that you have plenty of revenue to do the things that, to set the district up long-term. Um, and, and so I do think it is sound.
And this is going to provide the vehicle to do that.
Correct. Yeah, unfortunately, you as a district, this is the one thing that you, as the patrons of the district, can do is levy a tax to increase revenues. The other revenue sources, obviously, you're relying on the state or the federal government to provide those revenues to you. These are your tax dollars, and so you as a community are choosing to, to tax yourself at these levels in order to make sure that you're financially sound.
Anybody got any questions?
Let me say, existing school facilities, various capital improvement, existing school facility, can you define that?
It will be defined as the projects that have been discussed to date, but it also is written broadly that way. It's sort of to give you this district maximum flexibility, use those monies how the district sees fit to use those monies. That can be written more narrowly, um, but in discussions with our, uh, council, we've been advised that we keep it more broad so that you have the flexibility to do the things that you, you want to do.
Anybody have any more questions, if not, we'll move, move forward.
So if there's no other questions, what you have before you again is the resolution. That resolution, we didn't really go through, but it's pretty straightforward. By adopting this resolution, you're adopting the proposed budget of expenditures for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, which reflects a seven mil increase in a bond issue of eight million one hundred thousand, or an amount not to exceed eight million one hundred thousand. You'll see item two, that the secretary is authorizing and directing the request of the county board of election to prepare the ballot and submit the question for the total tax as described in the budget. So we'll work with council to get that information together to, to provide to the county and work with your administration to ensure that that information gets put on there. Three and four is retaining not only Stevens, um, or renewing our agreement, but also to retaining the, the bond counsel that works with you on these bond transactions and has done so in the past. You'll see item five, the secretary of the board is authorized and directed to publish the notice of election, um, as required by law. And again, we'll do that and work with your, your administration on that. And then the item six, the superintendent of schools is authorized to offer the proposed bond issue described in the budget for public sale. Let me just stop right there and let you know that you're agreeing to by adopting this resolution. You're basically saying, once, if the election is successful, you're allowing me to go ahead and work with your administration to move forward without having to come back before you and ask your permission. The next time will be before each other and have an action item will be, uh, as it relates to the sale of the bonds and be here asking for your permission to do so. Now, obviously, there'll be a lot of communication before that, but in terms of a formal board action, that's what it would be. So again, very short resolution, but at the end of the day, that's what it says. Um, you're adopting this proposed budget of expenditures and then the other items are behind it as, as it relates to the application that we file with the Department of Education, as well as the different agreements that are there. So with that, I'm happy to stop and answer any questions, if not, any questions, and I defer to Mr. Vining for a recommendation. So with that, I'm happy to stop and answer any questions. If not, any questions, and I defer to Mr. Vining for a recommendation.
Questions? I recommend we proceed, absolutely. We need, we need to, can you help us with the motion? I mean, what it actually needs to say?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, make a motion to adopt the resolution or consider adopting the resolution. Um, adopting the proposed budget of expenditures. Yes.
You don't have to repeat that.
As presented, yeah.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed.
Great. I have some paperwork that I'll need the president and secretary to sign, but um, other than that, I appreciate it.
But that's the only motion you gotta make?
That's it for tonight.
Okay, what's the timeline now? Do we need to? When you, when you see, don't you have to come back in thirty days or something like that?
Not, no, I don't for this. Again, the next time I'll need an action item. If you go to page eleven of your, in your packet, if you want to see the timeline, that's in there. What is it, it'll depend on you guys as the board and what the community wants in terms of having, if there's gonna be any public meetings or anything like that. Happy to be there for those, um, answer any questions. But you'll see, what what in terms of next steps, what we'll do since the resolution was adopted this evening, we'll have it published. That publication has to happen sixty days prior to that election date. Um, as we talked about before, I want to make sure I get that in as quickly as possible, so if there's any errors, we can get that corrected, because that's a constitutional requirement. Then we will proceed, and you'll see the time, the timeline there for the May ninth election. The May ninth election happens, if the election is successful, well, then we will have election results certified, and we'll begin building the financing documents. What, our hope is to have these bonds offered by the end of June, so I'm coming back before you in July, and we're able to close August one. August one, literally, money will be wired into your account and will be available to spend on on day one, so. And no restrictions associated with that outside of just the tax exempt restrictions, so. And again, all we'll get into all that at a later date, but that's.
Because we were needing, our, the reason I was asking was because we need to change our board meeting next month, it comes falls during spring break. And if it mattered to you, we could go before or after, so it doesn't matter.
No, it doesn't matter, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other question? Do you have a question? Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Policy updates. Uh, we went through these last week. Anybody have any questions or have any changes they want to make to them at this time? I I'm sorry, I didn't hear. You want, and do you want to just find it and talk about it? Because if we change anything, we gotta send it back to PPC. Where it is. I think I left my stuff in.
Just three point four eight.
Okay. I don't have, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that in here, but yeah, it, I mean, what you need to have is a motion to change whatever you want to change, and then, and then we send it back to the PPC for for correction, or they can then come back with something else if they want to.
We said you were gonna talk to the through the board association and all that, you get a chance to do that?
Now, we looked at the next page and. Yeah.
Those are just recommendations for us. They're not liable. We're liable because we made the decision.
Correct.
But we can, you were that point right there. They just make recommendations about what to comply with the regulations coming out, not just through boards, okay, in the law. That's what they say is.
If we adopted, it becomes ours, our responsibility and our liability, so.
Well, what do y'all think as a board? Would, I'd like to hear from y'all.
Bernard, do you feel comfortable with them having mace, like, and just not a knife?
Right. I have, I have no problem with that portion. I have a problem, because my concern was is if, 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 I'm having a conversation with you. And your coat turn, and I see it, I feel threatened at that point. And being that, we gotta go through that model. I'm okay with that for it. I'm okay with that. I was not, I'm not having it tonight.
Would you be okay if we, like, struck out the knife part and pass everything else with the mace, and then let them kind of, let's, let them?
Well, I want to have those to put in there unless it's a part of their.
Their job description, yes. So would you be okay if we struck the knife unless it was part of their job description? Leave the mace, let them go back to PPC, like, re-discuss it if they really want it, bring it back to us. Are you okay with that? Can we do that?
Yeah. What you need to do is you need to make a motion to send just this part, I mean, send you know.
So everything else gets.
You can, you can go ahead and, you can go ahead and adopt all but three point four eight, if you want to. And then just send that one back to them to be revised, and are you hearing that? And so now you have a choice, when you go back, that y'all can y'all can do exactly what he says, or you can change it some other way, and then bring it back next month. And even no matter what you do, y'all can accept what is here, or then accept whatever they bring. Okay?
So are you okay with saying, like, okay, I'm recommend, um, recommendation option to an employee unless it is part of their job description? May possess a pocket knife. Yes, so to just add that verbiage in, leave everything else the same on that.
So in other words, you would be okay for for Kendall, for Kendall to have a knife, but it would not be okay for me to have.
Who was saying it's part of their job?
Well, this is for licensed personnel, so it'd be a teacher.
Yeah.
So I mean, like, I guess if the science teacher.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's slippery slope, bro.
Yeah, I would. They better have good reason.
Yeah, well, it, but that would let PPC decide. We can move along with everything else, let them hash out if they they want this knife.
Okay, why don't you just pass all but that one? And then send it back to PPC and they come back with a recommendation next month.
On page three, number four at the bottom, there's you can place tear gas with pepper spray or leave tear gas in the policy and add pepper spray. Should we also put pepper spray in there as well?
Is that the same, is that the same one?
I'm gonna put you on spot, is is this about self-defense, or is it more about having something to do some work with?
It was kind of like if the guys forget, like, had hay strings in the morning.
And have a knife.
Their pocket knife and their, and their.
With the change and their.
Or, yeah, if it's with their keys and they grab it and they forget to leave it.
I get that.
For protect, a protection level from recourse, if it just so happened.
Yeah, we never really went there. We were just saying, in in good faith, you know, just accidentally left it. We didn't want anybody to get.
Get in trouble because of that.
Because of that accidentally having it. That night thing, we never really thought about.
Can we address that?
That they wouldn't get in big trouble.
I mean, I know that's crazy, lawyer, lawyer thought, but.
Well, I think you're right there.
But I.
I think in the policy, I think in the policy at the bottom of page two, where it says employees may school district, parents or school district employees may result, let me read the whole sentence. Possession of weapons, knives, or self-defense items that do not comply with the limits contained herein. The failure of an employee to safeguard such items or the use of such items against students, parents, or other school district employees may result in disciplinary action taken against the employee, which may include termination or non-renewal of the employee.
But that could be, that again, again, that would be, that would come to the intent that we would have to determine. Okay, if someone just acts like you said, somebody accidentally did it, then it would be a, maybe a write-up or something like that. If we, you know, if they had their ten-inch knife on their side, you know, there may be a different intent there.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so yes, that would be okay, because they're not gonna get fired if we found a knife on them.
Yeah, I mean.
Only if there's intent.
And it says may, so I think that's.
But I mean, all, you know, all policies, not all policies, a lot of policies end up saying may lead up, you know, could be up to including dismissal. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I was just, I was just asking about the the pepper spray, because on page three, it, it, just so it's not so tightly defined.
So maybe we should send it back to them, like, completely omit that, we're gonna add pepper spray in.
Let's just don't do that whole, that, that three, two, whatever it is.
Yeah, we have a motion.
A second.
Alright, we can have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign.
Yeah, did that motion include both that and the classified?
Yeah, yeah, I did all, all.
Okay.
I make the motion and we send five, three point four eight back, uh, the personnel committee for reconsideration.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. You know, in favor of that motion, say aye. All in the same, same sign. That motion passed.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, uh, we have a request for a transfer. Three boys from Prescott, or young men, I should say, from Prescott, one sixteen, fifteen, and thirteen.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. No, we're in a motion.
You can't dis, you can't, you can't discuss the choo, the, the students. Whether you should or you shouldn't, either you do or you don't, that makes sense.
No.
That didn't make sense, but you can't say anything about good or anything about the students.
Okay, we got a motion in second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. Okay, that motion passed.
Alright, uh, the March Board meeting is the, uh, I believe it was twenty-first, which is during spring break. Uh, we move it to the fourteenth or the the next week. I probably recommend going and getting to the fourteenth, if that's okay with y'all, but we need a motion to do that, whatever. We move wherever you want to, or we can have it that week, I just, you know, whatever you wanna do.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in the same, same sign. That motion passed.
Hey, we have personnel, and I think you have a personnel page, you know, of, of, uh, and and either retiring or resigning, and uh, we just need a motion to accept.
We'll now enter into executive session. We're leaving the executive session, I'll bring the meeting back to order and.
I make a motion to accept the personnel package. Uh, I'm asking for a motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed.
I'm making a push.
Alright.
To, to adjourn?
Yeah. We got a motion to second to adjourn.
Oh, we're adjourned, right, so we're off.